Called order the Culver, town council meeting, roll call please.
William Clevenger.
Present.
Bill Giffens.
Here.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Rich Wes.
Present.
Sally Richardson is absent.
I'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the complete unsearchable for all. Okay, I just want everyone to be aware that this meeting is being broadcast via Microsoft Teams and is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Now, everyone in the room, please make sure your cellphone is on mute during the meeting. Thank you very much. Since there's no minutes for approval, we're gonna skip down to public hearing for the park improvement project. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamm. Motion to open the public hearing for the park improvement project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Sounds good. Shannon?
All right, well, thank you. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Shannon McLeod and I'm with Priority Project Resources. I have been the town's grant, federal grant writer and administrator for several years now. And we are currently working on a park improvement project that we are gearing up to get grant applications submitted for in sometime during October. So as a requirement of that grant process, we have to conduct two public hearings, which we had one at the last meeting. I think that was on the 14th. And we are having the one here this evening. I have a sign-in sheet that I'd like to circulate around, so if you could document that you were here, we sure would appreciate it. Um, I think Amber, if you are prepared to talk a little bit about the project scope, that would be great. So Amber is gonna tell you a little bit about what the project's gonna consist of. I'll tell you then a little bit about the grant process and the costs that are affiliated. And then we'll open it up for any questions that you may. All right, Amber, go ahead.
Um, so for those of you who don't know, or are getting as part of regional seller, the funds that were designated designated to Culver, we're doing for a, what we're calling it, a playground and social gathering space project on the west end of the park. And so as you might be aware, Culver was designated as a seller community first, and then we got the regional designation, which this project is part of. The plan is to break ground sometime next year, fingers crossed allowing. So we're aiming for the spring right now, but it all depends on the very long process that needs to happen. Um, the project itself, after a lot of surveying, input from the previous meeting, we haven't hashed out those changes yet, but we've all, I've also met with a lot of stakeholders, which includes Culver Farmer's Market coordinators and Alliance Club members. And so the project itself consists of sidewalks right in front of the West Pavilion to allow ADA accessibility to our farmers markets and events and all the booths that go in there. And then it also includes a new playground area and a plaza and a stage area right in front of the West Pavilion, because we have a lot of music performers that go on during different events in the farmers markets. And I have a, our first rendering, our preliminary one, if anyone wants to take a look at it as well. So I think that's just it all. And you're welcome to ask questions or provide any input based off of what I've said or what you see. So, does anybody want one?
Yes. Does the improvement ratio in the park, so there was a lot more cement or?
Um, actually, I mean, it'll be about the same amount of green space. The only place we would be taking away green space is to allow ADA accessibility, which is kind of required and necessary. So the only place that that's happening is, when by happening, I mean, taking away green spaces only for ADA accessibility. But we'll be increasing it because ultimately, because right now, there's the two playground sections and it's kind of awkward. The one directly in front of the pavilion, we're gonna remove since it's so close to the parking lot. And then parents don't have to chase their children back and forth between the two. And it's just gonna be one main playground section now. And then that's gonna open up the space so that the farmers market can expand and booths and events can expand. Anybody else want one? There you go. Sometimes, you guys want one? If a visual helps a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There you go. Jai one? You want one? Check out. Yeah, feel free, have a look at it. Sometimes a visual helps a little bit, but if you guys have any questions or input, we're happy to answer those and address them.
You can email her and what have you.
Yes.
All right. Uh, there's two sign-ins sheets circulating. Have everybody had an opportunity out here to sign? I don't know which one, and then you can pass them on up there. And then we can get everybody up here to sign, if that's okay. All right, so the actual park improvement project that we are working on right now, we have an estimated project cost of $600,000. We are going to be applying for a $480,000 grant. And then the community will be matching that with $120,000, of which $60,000 is coming from the park fund and $60,000 will be coming from its redevelopment commission. Uh, as Amber had indicated, this is part of the Marshall County stellar effort. The funding has been set aside, but we still have to go through the formal application process. So, uh, unlike a lot of applications that we put together that have been extremely competitive, this is pretty much a surefire thing. So that's, that's, that's a great, that's a great place for me to be in at this point in time. You know, I always hate to say, well, there's a possibility. So, uh, we are going to try and get the application, all except, all put together. And we are gonna get that submitted in October. It typically takes about 30 days for them to review and approve. And so come November, we'll have to do some publication notices from an environmental standpoint, publishing our, our notice of no significant impact and get grant agreements signed and whatnot. And then we will be going full throttle into making sure our plans and specifications are ready. And then I would anticipate that we will be bidding this project the first part of January. And as Amber had indicated, hopefully turning around early spring. And, uh, that we may wanna push back depending upon how close we are, because parks start getting busy in the summer. We don't want it to be under full construction during that time. So we may, and you know, we, that thing may get shifted a little bit, but that, at this point in time, is our intent to try to have, um, have dirt turning come the end of February 1st of March, you know, to try to get it in early spring so that, uh, we be ready to roll in those active summer months. All right? Any questions from anyone regarding the project or any of the dollar costs or any comments in general? Easy crowd tonight. I like that, you know? It's, for some reason, today's felt like a Monday to me all over again. So, all right. Um, Ford, do you have any questions? Okay.
Need to do it from here.
What we need to do from here is we are, I did have this, I wanted to.
Jenny, you don't want online, right? I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. And if anyone has any comments, they can email those to Karen or Jenny or Amber direct. And we'll make sure that those get into the record, okay? All right, so where we are in the process. Um, I think what I'm gonna do is Karen and Jenny and Amber, I'm gonna give this to you because you guys will be the ones that'll kind of be doing the full, kind of rounding a lot of this stuff up and some of it is done. But I just wanna kind of reiterate a few things that we need to get in order to get this application submitted. All right. Um, you can put a line through number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, and number six. We've got all those things that have Shannon's name done. Income survey, we did mail those out a couple of weeks ago. We have been getting responses in. We still obviously know we're short on our account and we knew, but the whole game plan was to try to narrow down the doors we have to knock on. We are still looking, as of today, we're gonna have about 60 to actually collect. We have tentatively set the night of October 19th, which may be a meeting night for you. Is, is not? Okay, good. All right, so October 19th, that is a Tuesday evening. We feel like we've had more success contacting people on weeknights versus on the weekend. People are out and running, especially in the fall weather, it's pretty and, you know. So we're gonna bring, bringing a team, that's what I kind of confirmed with everyone today on the night of October 19th. We're gonna have two, two cars driving around the community. One's gonna take the north, then the south. And we're, we've got the list of who we gotta knock on the door. We did send out some for replacements, so in the event that we can't get ahold of those, we have some replacements to pull. And to be quite honest, our replacement, uh, serve, the people that we sent out as replacements, they responded very quick. It's our main, it's our main group A, but that tends to be the case. I mean, it, it is what it is. And so we're hoping to knock it out then on the 19th. And then that be Tuesday night, and I'll, I'll do all the tallies on Wednesday, Thursday, and get our applications submitted on that Friday. I wanted to do it the week before, but unfortunately Oprah threw the proposals on the other ones, that the week of the 15th, so I had to knock you down a few days. And we'll get you in that following week, okay? So that's where we're at on that. Uh, one thing that's gonna be imperative, and this is still something that we need to do. We need letters of support from citizens. I need seven good letters as to why this park is important to this town and why these improvements will benefit this community and the activities and being able to expand the farmers market. Because this citizen participation and citizen input is extremely important. We may want to even, Amber, start something on Facebook to get some comments in, you know? I think we talked about that the last time, but if the park has a Facebook page or the town, somebody, let's get that so that we can, because that's a quick thing that people can respond to, but we still need those seven letters. So divide that amongst yourselves and try to be getting me those letters. The other letters, those were some just general ideas. Chamber letter as to how it would help the economics, you know, bringing more people into the area for farmers markets and events. That helps the gas stations, that helps the downtown, all of that good stuff. If you can get a letter from your chamber director, that'd be good. Or even Marshall County Economic Development, either or. A wellness letter from, I think that the county has a wellness, you know, through the crossroads. Maybe whoever's the chairman of that could put together a letter about how this supports your initiative that was part of the crossroads initiative, you know, of making people healthier and getting them outdoors and getting them into activities. We did talk a little bit about an insurance letter. I don't know if we necessarily need that, but I did hear if we have somebody that could talk to us about the existing conditions of the park equipment, the playground equipment itself. I don't think it's dangerous by any means, but as Amber had said, it, it's got a little age on it and maybe it's not ADA accessible and the new stuff. So something of that nature to justify the need to put in new park equipment would be great. Then the rest of it, we did get the existing park activities, Amber sent me that. And then Amber, if you could, then future activities with the farmers market, that plaza area, how you maybe intend to expand some things. Just general ideas, they're not gonna hold you to any of those, but if you could get some of those, that'd be good. And then the park staff and hours, volunteers. And then I think that a list of projects that you have completed within the last five years from a financial standpoint. I need to know about money that's gone out of this town and money that's still gonna come and why we need these grants. We're trying to leverage what we have. So those are some things, and I would like for you guys to try to shoot, have those done by October 10th. Because then, and then, and then you can email them to me as you complete them. But I need about a week to be able to gather all my material and build my, not legal case, but sometimes it feels like that. So I'm gonna need some days. So if you can shoot, have all that to me by the 10th of October, that gets it to me where I, I've got time to do what I need to do. Okay? All right, well, that is about all I have unless you all have anything else.
Amber, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, I just, well, I just wanted to, I got a message from Matt P. saying that the visitor center will write a letter of support.
Great.
The farmers market, trace and box.
Perfect. Things would be awesome because, I mean, all those letters, but those letters from citizens, I mean, all the simple, the organizations and philanthropic things, that absolutely, that helps me. But I have to have those citizen letters because if we don't have seven, we get dinged. And even though it's non-competitive, I like following their rules because when I follow their rules, they think I'm queen, you know? And it helps, it helps when we go back into competitive state, if you know what I mean, okay? So, all right.
Anybody else in the room have any questions? Anyone online have any questions for Shannon? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Rich. Most amazed to close the public hearing on the park improvement project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Next. We have a motion, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2021 dash 010 for the park fees, specifically the park slip refund policy. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Um, sorry, I sent you all out the document, kind of listing out what our 2021 current approved refund policy rate was. After experiencing it myself and running through it a few times, we had a few refunds this year. It just, it didn't make much sense, to be honest. And then also, and more importantly, I realized we didn't have a refund policy for our jet skis and kayaks and paddleboard renters. So I wanted to get them included in here. Traditionally, it was mostly just boat slip runners, but, so I focused on that last time. So I wanted to make it more inclusive. Everybody has a refund policy, so that's clear. This new refund policy really takes into consideration, you'll see the administrative fee. So what that consists of is filing their stuff, getting their paperwork in, getting their lease agreement, proof of residency if they have it, and vote title in. It also includes, Karen's end, she has to do one too. They had the, the renter has to fill out a refund form. And then we have to process it, and then Karen has to get that refund back out to them. So there, there's some administrative work that has to happen on our end and it takes time, obviously. So I wanted to take that into consideration. Each rate is about half and what, from the boat to jet ski to the kayak rack, it's about half of the one above that. So I just cut each one in half for the fee. And then I also included a transition fee because when that person leaves and we take the time to get them refunded and find a new rental, that period of time caused us to lose money because they caused that slip to be empty. So those were the two, that's kind of how it made sense in my mind to take those two things in consideration for the refund policy rate. Then we have dates listed. Any date before or on February 15th, you get a full refund, that's because the deadline is February 15th. So if you paid in November and you changed your mind before February 15th, we'll honor that. Um, and then, um, any date between February 16th and May 9th, we have the administrative fee. And the reason for that is because they wouldn't have had their boat in the water, so no need for the transition fee. And then, um, any date between May 10th to June 30th, we have the administrative fee, transition fee, and then an occupancy fee. So that's how long they've been in there, so that you have to pay for the time that you were in your space, obviously. And then any date after June 30th, because that's pretty much peak season for us and not many people wanna put their boat in on short notice by July, no refund amount will be granted. Yes.
Can you tell me what each one of those fees for the rental for the summer is?
Yes. Like, or?
For boats.
For overall, so if you, if you have the paper on you, on the second page.
I get it.
Okay. Yeah, and I have some in my hand if anybody wants to see as well.
Any questions in the room? Council have any questions? Anyone online have any questions? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the park fees for the pure slip refund policy?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamm. Thank you, Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have first reading of ordinance 2021 dash 010 park fees. Does anybody want me to read it? Or?
I would make a motion that I'm first reading, you include the, the provisions to the park fees and include refund policies that Amber had just explained.
Second.
Motion made by Rich, second by Bill Hamm to approve the refund of the park fees that Amber just mentioned to us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Motion to suspend rules.
Prove it on second and third reading.
Approve on second and third reading.
Thank you, Bill. There's a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, second by Bill Hamm to suspend the rules and approve ordinance 2021 dash 00010 park fees on second and third reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Next. We have public hearing on the 2022 annual budget.
Open the public hearing on the 2022 annual budget.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamm. Motion been made, the second to prove 20, open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same time. Motion carried on the annual budget hearing. Karen?
Hopefully you all picked up copies of the proposed budget for 2022 or afterwards. Basically, uh, I'll just go over the proposed budgets for each of the departments for the town and then the other funds that were required to advertise as part of the budget because they receive tax money. First of all, we're looking at approximately $1,264,642 in property taxes. The county income tax, which is also called the local income tax or LIT, is anticipated to be $447,504, which is, is up from last year, but not as much as most other counties. Other taxes, it's $51,112. Other fees, $72,000. And then we have a fire contract with, and an EMS contract with the union township. The fire contract is $85,500 and the EMS contract is plus EMS collections totals $296,000. And then you add in the circuit breakers and you actually, so you take $26,000 off of what you would collect from property taxes. And if anybody wants to talk circuit breakers, I'm happy to explain, just not right now. It's a little too complicated to get into. Um, so for the general, we're looking at the clerk budget at $473,625. The police budget at $564,800, fire at $268,770, EMS at $68235, and street at $350,225. We're looking at actually being over our income by about $146,897. Keep in mind, these are all estimates, we do not spend all of it. And actually, I think we can take down the EMS budget just a bit as CRC invested money towards the ambulance. And at the bottom, you can kind of see what the ending balance for each of the budget. For the general fund at 2020, estimated 2021, estimated 2022. So we are, we are spending down our general fund a bit the, over these last two years as we've had some big equipment purchases with the fire EMS. So we're gonna work on, I'm gonna bring up a little bit later something that we're going to work on to maybe anticipate some of those equipment costs and maybe not take such a hit like we are. But thankfully, we have plenty there, we've been saving. So, um, under the park budget, we anticipate $272,278 in income. And we anticipate expenditures of $380,000. Again, we're gonna be over by about $107,722. And some of that, that will actually go around $60,000. I think we took all of the $100,000 for the park project out of there. So that will come down a bit, but she's got a couple of other projects coming up as well. So again, spending down the park budget. On the other hand, NVH, we're putting money away. The NVH is the motor vehicle highway, and that's money that we can use for paving roads, road preservation, that type of thing. Looks like we're gonna bring in about $58,240. And we will spend $53,240 on paving. The local roads and streets, similar type of thing. It's money that we receive specifically for street maintenance. Anticipate receiving $17,654. And we plan on spending $16,154. The cumulative capital development fund, we anticipate receiving $84,069 in property taxes. And then looking at a total income of $86,825. Again, this is another fund that we've been putting away money and building up a balance in that fund. And so we're gonna actually spend some of it to alleviate burden on the general fund. We're gonna be able to spend, I'm sorry, but purchase air packs for the fire department, radios, and some gear for the EMS. So we'll be overspending that one a bit and spending it down. But I think that one will be recovering as these are one-time expenditures. The riverboat, we used to get a lot more, but with COVID, the people weren't gambling the last couple of years. So that income has gone down to $3,000, looking at some interest of about $750. So $3,750. Again, another area that we could, we could use and spend down just a bit. So we're gonna spend $11,334. The grant is just a fund that money comes in, money goes out. Actually, money goes out and then money comes back in because of the reimbursable grants for that projects that we have. And that's mainly the stellar projects, the Lake Max 2, Phase 2, Jefferson and State Road 10 are essentially done. We're looking also at Lake Max Phase 3 and the Caston Jefferson Street Trail. And then finally, the ARPA, those, that's the money that we got from the American Rescue Plan. We received $164,926 so far. I went ahead and budgeted that for next year, just in case we're in a position where we're ready to spend it. If not, it's, it's okay. We'll get that same amount, we should get that same amount next year, I believe, and that'll be our total. We just have to spend that money by 2026. So I'm just including that in the budget to make people aware. And if they're gonna have to spend, we have to come up with a plan and we're discussing that. So I'm just including that in the budgets, make people aware and if they're going to have to spend, we have to come up with a plan and we're discussing that. That's a snapshot.
Very good.
Of a lot of work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any questions online for Karen? Hearing, or seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Motion made to close the public hearing on the twenty twenty-two annual budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the first reading for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one one, the twenty twenty-two annual budget. Is there a motion to approve the annual budget for twenty twenty-two?
I would move that we approve the annual budget for the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one one.
On first reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich, second by Bill Ham to approve on first reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one one, the twenty twenty-two annual budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Motion to suspend rules to approve on second and third read ordinance. Help to.
I respectfully request that we wait until the next meeting to do that, especially because of the budget.
And we got time before it's
Yes.
to be submitted. So, thank you for all the motion. Okay? Thank you very much. Next. Alda Beneback, the Benedictus.
I'll make Paul Marshall. Everyone else around here does have equal.
Where's yours, Paul?
Thank you, sir. First, I appreciate that the council asked me to bring through the TIF review of the report we provided last week to CRC. I've got a forewarning you, there's a lot of bad news in here, but it's material to your actions going forward and you should be aware of it. Again, just going to run through it, the progress of good and bad news. Examples, just so you understand the extent of what we're talking about and then really what needs to happen. Because for us, the timeline by the end of this calendar year will affect the amount of revenue that we can get in our TIF in twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-two is already set. That money's already set. Bottom line, TIFs have been neglected and mismanaged for years. This resulted in a loss of well over half a million dollars in TIF revenue to the town. It has also resulted in a crippling of our ability to do economic development, long-term financing, economic development, or float a bond from this point. Since twenty, since August third, myself, Bill, and Jen have been being weekly, we we have been going through one hundred percent of all the TIF properties and rolling through that, identified problems. We've gone to state resources as well as county resources to resolution. We've also engaged both our Phil Fasenda from Barnes and Thorberg and Baker Tilly to be part of this process.
If I could interrupt you, let's say it's, which bill it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. From CRC, Bill Clevinger.
Thank you.
Who's also, he and Sally are both representatives from the council. You're right on par. There's Bill, Bill, and Bill. Good news, situation only gets worse next year. The fact we're doing this, you can start seeing an improvement in twenty and twenty-three. Right now, twenty twenty-two is already set. Bad news is, they're a mess. We've lost money on our TIFs. We failed to capture new significant growth and our management of TIF revenue around tax abatement is a little bit difficult. I come from a business world. If this were business, to the extent of this, I would have fired or replaced the leadership team that was on top of this. And I'm going to give you the examples. These are just three buckets. First loss on the TIF properties. We all know that Vanguard Water Tower, they've been acquired by the town. Everyone here except for, everyone in council except for Bill Ham has been on CRC. So I'm assuming you know what base value is. You're not on town council. But you know what base value and incremental assessed value is, but this has a dragging effect on on our, on our revenue that we generate. And another example is we have, they get lots of change. They go to the county for assessment changes and significantly changes the value of the property because it changed the class of property, not, not C one, C two, but the class of property and it drops the value. Normally it gets caught in every two, I mean, two to four years when you do a TIF review. This hasn't and it's dropped down and affected the base value, which drives down what we manage. The same, I give an example, there's a vesting property that got donated to the ECAT. The minute it did, became a nonprofit, dropped down to zero value on tax rolls. That in turn has a dragging down effect on the base value. We have established base value. So what does this mean to you? In the last five years, TIF one, which is our largest TIF, has grown by about maybe fourteen percent over five years. That TIF is generally funded by condos and our land use development entities. So it's funded by commercial or residential. I would say residential real estate has grown by more than fourteen percent the last five years, based on sale prices. Something else that could be a drag. Second, our second TIF has decreased in value by ninety-five percent. So let me put that in, those are incremental assessed values of five million versus a million. That is where our money is generated. We put it in TIF revenue dollars for you. Last year, we get seventy-two thousand dollars revenue for the town. And that's it. Twenty twenty-two, we're going to get under four thousand dollars. We have a bond on both of those TIFs. On the TIF two, we have a bond that we have to pay for the next three years, about forty-four thousand dollars. So if we were dependent just on the revenue we would get from that, we would be able to follow the bond. We aren't dependent on it because luckily we only have, we have four hundred thousand dollars left in TIF two. So one hundred and thirty-three thousand needs to be paid off the bond to now and twenty twenty-five will come out of that. Again, it speaks to, they need to review. There's significant issues. And this drives your ability as a town and CRC to leverage advantages. Right now, we're not in a position to float a significant bond. If we were to do something fiber for this town, we couldn't fund it based on this. And this is an initial assessment. We couldn't fund it. So those are the big issues. The next one, we failed to capture growth. And we went all the way back. So the riggings was a condo unit and Pearl Street condos. They could have been in the TIF early on and again, those were two thousand five through two thousand ten, significant amount of income. The Culver Cove and Maple Ridge generates close to twenty thousand, twenty million dollars a year incremental assessed value for us. So those are big drivers. More recently, we lost about one point, one and a quarter million in incremental assessed value because they weren't put in the TIF. Along funeral, Dollar General. I mean, that was a significant loss and we knew about it because we annexed it into the town. So it was known when it came on. And that's once the, once they're assessed and they're outside the TIF, that's the base value and we didn't capture it. Same with the BP expansion. I mean, we knew that was happening. We could have added them to the TIF at any point in time prior to them getting counted in the tax. Horace Place Apartments is doing it right now. But these are what we missed and these are significant dollars. So the bolded dollars are the revenue dollars that we will not see in these TIFs. And by the way, our TIFs, TIF one has twelve more years left on its life. TIF two, fourteen years. That's what those numbers run out. Tax abatement and TIF revenue. No question about the incentive's done. So no, this is about just the math. TIF one expires twelve years, TIF two in fourteen years. And we're talking about the Paddocks and Sandhill. Good investment. Understand the town needed to do a ten-year abatement. CRC has well invested close to three hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure work, based on the information we gathered that Karen tracks. We'll only be able to collect back two hundred thousand of it. Because the last two years of the TIF is when the tax abatement runs out. We're still, we will still cost us ninety thousand. We won't get back our original investment. You can move TIFs. That could have been moved at any time. Again, I don't think a lot of people are aware of this. You can move a TIF when it was not developed, even though you're planning to into a new, set up a new established TIF and give it another twenty-five year life. I'd say right now you have four fifteen Lakeshore. Can be taken out of a TIF this year, establish a new TIF next year, and it goes in there at the value at the end of this year. Same with Tammerack. Same with the third phase of Paddocks. It's sitting in a TIF now. It'll only last fourteen, call it fourteen years, depending which TIF it's in, but it can be taken out now as the minimal value. It's undeveloped land. You can put it in a TIF.
So what, Paul, back up a minute? You said Tammerack you would do that with, even though it's a low assessed value right now versus the developing property?
Just a real thumbnail statement. This is the property today, twenty twenty-one. And we take it out and has an assessed value of eighty thousand dollars. In May of twenty twenty-two, you open a new TIF and you put that property in that TIF. That property goes in at the value that it was on January first of that year, which is eighty thousand.
So it won't do that currently or it stands today?
It stands today and they could build on it through the rest of the year, which they're planning to do. And you will still go into base value, start the base value that, and I will say, I got this within the first ten minutes of conversation with Phil Fasenda.
So you'd make it a TIF three, in other words?
You have to do a third TIF.
You're talking about the Paddocks?
Yeah, no, Tammerack.
Tammerack, down by the cemetery.
Some people call it a car.
We talked about Tammerack. That would give you the full twenty-five years is what you're saying, basically.
Have a whole new life. And you can do that. You can do that with the vesting property that was, that is now a nonprofit, but there's there's, you need to manage. And, and this is not, this isn't secret stuff. I mean, I'm not a smart guy. I'm an average intelligence guy. And I, within ten minutes of conversation with our, with Rhonda Cook at RAI, with Philip Fasenda, who's focused on economic development on Barnes and Thorberg, and with Heidi Alst. They all, these are tools that many, many towns use. So this isn't secret stuff.
Now, I was just specifically asking about Tammerack because we discussed it at our our town force meeting and I was thinking the difference between now's assessed value and six months from now's about the same. But it's the twenty-five year that you're going for in that scenario.
All of a sudden, your math model changes. What you can offer is an incentive because ideally, this is not a, the TIF, CRC money is not a grant to be spent down. It's an investment that pays itself back and will. So you're able to do bigger investments. So when you're able to put a longer window on it, you can make an investment of whatever to get the infrastructure to recover that and that also pays.
Yeah, and you can recover better the twenty twenty-five versus the current.
Right.
So that, those are examples. Just to let you know, that's the scope of what we're talking about, where we right now, going forward, we review our findings with Baker Tilly. Because they will help us generate final numbers that do go into working with Marshall County because the auditor's office is one of the, set the TIF's values and help us generate the numbers for twenty twenty-three. Engage Barnes and Thorberg, they've already laid out the process. Council's involved in this, there's a big voting going. We'll have to resolution this. Goes from CRC up through the planning commission, back to the town council, back to CRC. It'll all be done between now and the end of this year, which is a deadline. Otherwise, twenty twenty-three is set. You won't be able to do anything until next year. But that's the process.
Not to interject, but I think as part of that process, this presentation should go to plan commission as well. Because I know from like their last meeting, they've currently recently rezoned a C two to our residential.
So.
And I know some of these properties that we went over as potential additions or C twos. But I think it's important for them to understand what's going on here because they're talking about rezoning some things as part of the comp plan.
So let me just help clarify a couple of things. One, Chuck had already asked if he could do any of the help and he took it, at least gave him a heads up, right Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, about that. They have to approve the economic development plan. They don't have to, it's not a zoning change.
Right. No, I totally get that. What I'm saying is they need to understand why you might add a C two to the TIF or why you might take something out or add it back in. Because in some cases, if they're considering a rezoning, like if they're planning on making four C twos residential,
Sure.
we wouldn't necessarily want to put it in the TIF.
So I'm more about, we're in the IC. You're right about this, but right now, in order to, you know, here's, here's another statement. We brought in about five hundred and twenty-one, five hundred and thirty thousand revenue in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure what it's going to be, but pretty much you can tell you twenty twenty-two could be four hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we're heading south on revenue that we're bringing in, in a town that is growing. In a town that has real estate that's going through the roof. Right now, what I'm talking about is doing decrement work between now and the end of this year to stop the bleeding. Adding, and, and that's what, that's what town council and planning has been doing. It's like, figure economic plan, you're taking out all the stuff that's emptying the bucket. It won't hurt the bondholders. Philip Fasenda is already checking on that one because it's actually, it'll make sure the revenue flow continues. But right now, I'm just trying to stop the bleeding. Then, and then next, and then next year.
I just want to make sure the plan commission understands.
They do. They'll need to.
This.
I'm glad to go speak on behalf, I've been invited, glad to go speak there on behalf of CRC. We'll need their, their voting. And this is what we need to do. Engage Baker Tilly from the findings behind others. They were already putting together a letter proposal for us. Sally and I talked, soon as we give those proposals, we'll all step in the CRC for review and execution. I've already received the Barnes and Thorberg proposal and that will go out to the CRC members along with Baker Tilly ones. So we can do that, willing the whole special session of engagement, we have them to do it. They both have set timelines suitable. And then click, click schedule on the previous slide to provide the changes to county auditor's office by the end of the year. By the way, I'll tell you that there are towns in this state that do this every year because they don't trust their county auditor's office. It's never done. I never expected to find all this day, but this is. But this I guess, your frustration to my voice, it's just, I am amazed. And I'm more amazed we've limited ourselves now. It's, we need to, again, we need to float a bond. We have about a million dollars in two bonds in a in our payment for the Culver thirty, thirty thousand a year Culver account, water. It's a commitment we made now in twenty twenty-five. We have a significant commitment right now that limits our ability to launch a bond. And I'm not a bond person, I'm just looking at the cash flow. Long term, we're going to have more money. But near term, we lost an ability to do some. Only why I was asked to come present this to you and glad to answer any questions you have.
I'm just thinking, would you want to check that county auditor's vacation schedule, rent holidays? And it appears tough as it is. I just want to make sure she's ready for whatever we're giving her.
Yeah, yeah. And
I mean, I just don't know how tough it was to get on the calendar this time.
Not on it. You've not returned my calls. I'm usually a nice guy.
And if we get adopted in twenty twenty-one, we can, it can get changed.
It can be back better. Just want to make sure if we go to all the trouble, it doesn't stop there.
Again, this is just a stump.
Counsel, are there any issues? Questions for all?
Plan for CRC is to hire Baker Tilly and to hire Phil Fasenda B and T to, this is be getting the ship right is what you're saying. That's correct?
That is correct. Phil Fasenda, the reason is legal, as you know, announcements, some of these public announcements, drafting and modifying our economic development plan in place. It's just the same work that you're going to do next year. Establish your TIF if you choose. And the other side, Baker Tilly, they do an annual review of our, it's called the TIF neutralization report, but that's just an overview. You have to engage them further to go down into the properties. They will do that. You have to engage them further to go down into the properties, and they will do that for us. And we'll engage them to go through each of the properties, validate what we found, find out.
And just kind of a follow-up, in, in our joint session meeting between CRC and Culver, we were talking about a development project that I'm going to be talking about a little later on. And I don't know whether Phil, in it, there's going to be a property that's already in a TIF that we wanted to separate out to start a new twenty-five year plan on, and uh, I don't know whether we would add that, we would add some of these properties to that district, or it would be a solid together, separate one, I don't, I'm not sure how we're going to do that, but, just so you know, that's coming down the line.
I talked about, and here, so you could use that property as an example. Whatever, you take everything out this year, that's either all in the bucket, or it's low priced, and you know it's going to be developed. All that, that second category gets moved into the new TIF, so even if the TIF is established and being due, it still goes back to the value of the land.
Right.
January, so it's not just one, so you, you would do them all. And again, we identified three that we were just talking about right here, that you would do, there are, and you may want to really look at, in both sides of the street, uh, what you want to add.
Not room for further discussion, but for you and what you did here, thank you, and appreciate what you've done.
It's not over yet, Doctor, I mean, this is.
Didn't say it was.
Welcome, but yeah, this is, yeah.
I'd like to make a comment, I think that it's an excellent presentation, but I would request that, opinions be left out of the presentation. Some people have been on the CRC during that time. I think that really what the objective and the purpose of the presentation, I think it brings out some of the shortcomings, but I think that it's not the place for public or for personal opinion as to what's happened in the CRC.
Let me help craft that, because I'd like to respond. Town skill sets, there's nothing personal about this, people bring a skill set. Everyone on early council, you are civic, you volunteer, you give your time and your efforts. And I believe this multimillion dollar management needs a certain set of skill sets. The skill sets and that, so you don't put volunteers in a place where their skill sets are not a match to the requirements.
Well, taken. Okay, let's move on. Regional stellar plan update.
Um, the Amber covered the, and Shannon covered the park project, which is part of regional stellar. And then the small trail project, we don't have a status change on that yet, that's still disciplinary design. So no other updates for that. And then I'll do stellar project with the town manager, touch on the same report. Um, so starting with the town manager report, uh, the electric vehicle charging station, you guys approved the Rocky Bachman contract. Rocky is about three to four weeks out from getting the concrete board for that, so we will install that once that happens. Paving, paving and crack ceiling, E M B, because of rain all last week, did not get done. They have not shown up this week, Bob and I are meeting with them later this week, uh, to figure out when that's going to finally get completed, there's also some grates they need to take care of on the north end of town, that they haven't reattached properly, and we had that same issue with their last project on South Main Street, there are four grates down there. So Bob and I are going to talk to them about taking care of that. Um, apparently that was on a punch list, um, for that project when they did South Main, and uh, it never got taken care of.
Got overlooked?
No, um. I think our previous town manager approved an invoice, not realizing it hadn't been done.
Oh, question, Jen. Um, part of the paving, are we, are we looking at repaving the stretch from ten down Lake Shore? Well, they, they sealed it, but there's places where they put the sidewalk, and there's a difference in the asphalt, is that going to be, is that going to be?
Yeah, that'll end up on a punch list, but we don't call it done until it's fixed. Are you talking the, are you talking at Lake Shore Drive?
Yes.
Did they put in the new sidebar?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, you mean that light difference between the two levels, that's on, on our punch list.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, they did try to make a fix in front of Park and Shop's driveway, which is now better, it's not quite perfect.
Right.
Um, so yeah, they're, they haven't reached significant completion yet. Um, Lake Max Trail Phase Two, as you can see, construction is starting, signage went up. There's activity up here on Washington Street, and just a reminder that that's going to be a one-way, they've already put in the signage for that. Lakeview, you'll still be able to uh, park at both sides of the street, drive up and down, but when you come down toward Washington, you can only take a right, you can't take a left. So as that graphic pointed out, that Karen sent out. Um, and just so you know, we did meet, uh, Tony Sellers, Bob and I, and uh, Curtis, and the inspector for Troyer Group met at the similar property to discuss the two weeks. So those have all been put on the contractor's site plans, which should be taken care of, but we'll monitor that pretty carefully. Uh, Lake Max Phase Three is still status quo, I will hang Culver Academy's about the utility easement, um, to see if we can get that back soon. We'd like sooner than later, just so we can move forward with Midwestern's proposal that you guys approved at the last meeting. That Slayton Jefferson Trail, that's the regional trail project that I told you is still status quo. Um, and then I'm going to push all the way to the next page, um, under Bob's report tonight, and he'll discuss the intersection. Thank you, I did want to let you know that MACOD said that they would help with traffic counts, we'd like, one of the guys on staff from there wrote me today, so we'll schedule that with Bob according to, but Bob will discuss more about that with you under his report. Um, already discussed the park project, EMS, Jeff is going to review COVID policy with you, we can vote on that at the next meeting. We definitely need to make some updates to that, just.
Right.
Granitically, but I think Jeff will be able to finalize it at the next meeting. Town manager updates, Fall Festival, um, this has been on the town manager report for a few rounds now. If you guys recall, this is October eighth through the tenth, our department heads have met with Chamber President. The businesses would like to do Fall Festival and close down Main Street as normal, put turf on the road, et cetera, where they do like the kids' play area. Uh, they'll have like pumpkin carving and that sort of activity. We had approved, all the department heads have approved this, except for Wayne, who was waiting to determine the alcohol permit. You know, how they do a beer garden type of thing, that has since come through, Wayne has approved it and has recommended, um, that the council approved this permit for Fall Fest.
That's closure from Washington to Madison?
Yes.
And have, have the merchants in that area been talked to, which is our policy?
Yeah, I believe that most of them are involved in planning it, too, but Elizabeth's been the primary contact for that. So. I believe they've also got this advertised now and calendared up.
So is there a motion to approve a Fall Festival for October eighth through tenth?
To move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with the understanding that those merchants have been talked to. I think that that's the condition of our, our event permit, and it has not always been followed in advance, so.
Which has been made and seconded, approve Fall Festival for October eighth through tenth, with the caveat that the merchants be aware of uh, our requirements, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carried.
Uh, broadband task force meeting, we met with one of the providers today, had a very productive and big meeting. We meet with another one tomorrow at eleven forty-five AM. Um, Phil is part of that task force along with David, also, I don't know what you say.
Arlington.
Um, and Mike.
Phil Flavender.
Yes, Mike Overmeyer, J B Overmeyer joined us, they've been a huge help from an expertise standpoint and, part of that group, so we will update you on how the rest of those meetings go. Economic Development Initiative, I have some phone calls into some vendors locally, pricing, should have that for you at the next meeting. And Karen Schuman has offered space at school to host that, so I'd rather do it there than at Swan Lake, based on input from you guys, and just, doing it locally will be convenient for people. Um, I haven't heard anything on the Ready Grant or MCCF Grant, that MCCF Grant application that we did for the basketball court, which should appear soon. They've done interviews, and I think the grant committee meets in early October, so possibly by the time we get to the next meeting. We already know about Tamarack Road and where we're at with that, based on that. And Jeff is completing some work on the emergency services agreement, and he's been tracking data back several years, uh, that Culver Academy's requested, and it's mainly to look at what percentage of their patients end up paying their bills, comparatively speaking. I hope we've kind of found some interesting information around that, that I think they will be interested in as well. So we'll work on trying to get back to actual number and agreement with them once Jeff hands off that information. It's been kind of tedious to track all of that for the past several years. Uh, that's really a lot of that right now.
Thank you very much, Jen. Okay, let's move on, the department head reports.
Oh, wait, Phil, sorry, one more thing that came in late. Um, so there's a group out of Plymouth, um, that Plymouth, you know how they've been putting in trail system, and they, uh, so their trail committee, and part of the Main Street organization there, they are working with MACOD to set up a mock area where, uh, MACOD has like this trailer full of equipment and stuff, where you can narrow a street, uh, let's say these, physical objects, sort of test area, and they want to do this at one of their trailheads, and it's uh, what they'll do is set it up to act like a trail crossing, and they'd like to borrow from the town of Culver our speed radar, piece of equipment, so I talked to Wayne about that, he was comfortable with it as long as, there was an agreement that if they damaged it, they would either have it fixed or replaced. So today I did receive from Sean Cerese, an agreement that basically says exactly that, that the city of Plymouth would be, using this piece of equipment, that Culver agrees to loan it, and that if it is damaged, uh, or sustains any kind of damage, that they would take care of that. And then he's got Sean's signature and my own on that agreement. Uh, they would be using this piece of equipment from early October, I think October fourth through October thirtieth. Um, and it basically would sit near this trailhead with a speed on it, so that people recognize, oh, this area looks different than we're used to seeing it, and I better slow down. And the idea is that if they put in a crossing where this trailhead is going to go, uh, they're testing that out, they're going to do traffic counts, they're going to look at what's happening in that area, and MACOD will do some of that work with them. But the city of Plymouth does not own one of those speed radar machines, so.
Do they want to borrow some of Bob's yield signs at the crosswalk?
We can ask. Um, but.
They're going to pay you?
No, we just weren't, you know, it came through the Crossroads team, we all tried to share.
Scratch, scratch each other's back.
Yeah, but Wayne and I weren't quite comfortable asking the council without them agreeing to pay if they damaged it for some reason, so we had them write up.
So do we need a motion to?
I would prefer you to that versus me just say it's okay.
What is the timeframe again?
October fourth, is Sunday the fourth or Monday?
Monday is the fourth, so it's the third.
And then it's October third to the, through the end of month, sorry.
And not having it in down for Fall Fest, Wayne doesn't think this would be a problem.
Or a motion to approve the agreement?
On that we loaned the city of Plymouth our speed trap site for, um, for the duration of October, with the understanding that the agreement, that they will be responsible for any damage, this is third.
Second, motion made to second it to approve the speed trap side?
No, don't put that in the.
Speed limit side, speed limit side, speed limit battery side.
Thank you, sorry.
Charles Richmond, Bill Cuthbert supplement.
Yes. All those in favor, for the month of October, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See that one coming back.
That's right.
I will make sure this can sign and get it back to Sean, and I'll CC Bill on that when I send it out.
Sounds good.
CC Jen, just for good measure.
Thank you. Okay, I finished this town manager's report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Department head report, EMS, Jeff, are you on? Or are you in the tunnel? I'm in town, okay, let's move on.
Well, yeah, just get your feedback on that policy too, and I've got some stuff if you want to wait to see mine.
Yeah, I've got, you got it, I'm probably, yeah. Move on, okay. Eric?
Yeah, I've got a couple more things to run across to, uh, one thing is, we're going to be, uh, states kind of have struggles with getting, guys to get trained, to be able to get on, actually get on the truck, it takes quite a while, a lot of training. I guess the state has changed the statute on it a little bit, uh, so that we can get guys to at least get on the truck, not necessarily go in the building, do things like that. So we're going to be pushing with the help of Facebook, media, whoever, try to get us some more members. Because a lot of people are afraid to get on the department, because they don't want to spend a year sitting there, not being able to help, or it really is a torrent, that we've struggled with three years. So in the month of October, we're going to be advertising organizations and towns should be contacted, or bigger ones anyways, to maybe help, have somebody to push them our way, so that we could get together and have a, a meeting of the ones that we are, then we are going to put that training on ourselves. Thirty-hour, I think, or forty-hour training, which we'll do in-house, which will get those people eligible. We have, we have a couple of arms department now that have been there six to eight months. Um, I can't do it, they can help out at the station, but we really can't, at a scene, they can't go out and put. So we're going to be pushing that month of October, and the class is going to be, ended up in January, we may take, we may take some, from other communities, we really don't want to train other people on our equipment, and then have to go back to their house, train them. We wouldn't mind having a couple, that's going to help them, that department get somebody on the truck.
Your question on the recruitment, have you put the high school involved, I mean, I know age-wise, they probably don't qualify, but, but in terms of the, like a, you know, junior.
You have a local death program that's set up to this, okay, but then we actually had two, last year they both graduated, one military.
Okay.
One's still here on that program, so we do, but we will be reaching out to them also to, of course, this, older, there's some people that are going to join, or do want to, you know, certain people at a certain age, you know, only eighteen years old, that's going to be eighteen. Those that to us too, you know, it's not us doing it. Yeah, there'll be, that'll be. Yeah, there'll be, that'll be explained more, I'm sure, okay, once it comes out, we need you guys to keep contact. On the second note, south end tornado sirens down, I guess not tornado season, we had them all checked a week ago, this, this just like a testing, we haven't had them checked in three years, so we kind of had trouble with that one, so like, why we had ERS come in, and why they were here, we had to check, and you had radios, it's down, down there, so they're re, doing it, fixing it, so as soon as they get that fixed, they'll all be back to snuff. You had me get quote for fire radios. You went to the Motorola company, because it's probably better radios, that's who sells them. You had a quote for two radios, ten thousand fifty-nine dollars and four cents. You guys in meetings previous told me to get these prices, in order to ease up budget money that I had in my line item, some more radios is about seven thousand dollars, I think it was, we spent a little bit of it on parts and pieces for the other radios.
Can you say that number one more time, Karen, for the.
Ten thousand fifty-nine dollars and four cents.
Four cents.
And also there'll be a seventy-five dollar programming fee on those, I think it's for call, to get it done, so after all, we want to click it in the radio, and the bills are going to be out.
You looking for a motion?
Yes.
I saw a move that we allow the fire department to purchase the two Motorola, Motorola radios in the amount of ten thousand?
Fifty-nine oh four.
Ten thousand fifty-nine.
And also the seventy-five dollar programming.
Yeah, seventy-five dollar programming fee, yes. Second, which was made in the second for the fire department to prove, to buy two Motorola radios, cost of ten thousand fifty-nine dollars and four cents, and also to get them programmed for seventy-five dollars, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And the last thing is, next week is National Fire Safety Week, so we will be going through kindergarten, middle school, high school, and the two preschools, two all do safety programs, fire drills. Because the young ones, they really like it, and that's all.
Okay, I've got a proclamation to read, proclamation to designate, designate October three through nine twenty twenty-one as National Fire Prevention Week, whereas the town of Culver is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our town, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than two thousand seven hundred and seventy people in the United States in two thousand nineteen, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safety, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in app, and whereas Culver residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms, knows how to respond, and whereas Culver residents who have planned and practice a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive, survive a fire, and whereas Culver residents will make sure their smoke and oxygen alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas Culver Union Township Volunteer Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire inquiries through the prevention and protection education, and whereas Culver residents are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the two thousand twenty-one Fire Prevention Week theme, quote-unquote, learn the sounds of fire safety, end quote, effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, therefore, I, Bill Githens, Town Council President of the town of Culver and the state of Indiana, who hereby recognize October three through nine twenty twenty-one as Fire Prevention Week throughout this state, and I urge all the people of Indiana who learn the sounds of fire safety and Fire Prevention Week twenty twenty-one, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Culver Fire and Emergency Services, witnessed by my signature and seal of the town of Culver this twentieth day of October twenty twenty-one, do I have a motion to approve this, do we adopt that resolution and authorize you to sign it on behalf of the town council?
Second.
Which was made in second to approve the proclamation of the Fire, National Fire Prevention Week for October three through nine twenty twenty-one, and authorize me to sign it on behalf of the town, Culver Town Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
We have one more thing on that, last year being the situation and stuff, we kind of went away from smoke detectors, didn't have any, didn't sit any yards for years, do anything, so I brief kindled that fire, so we should have a smoke detector somewhere in the valley of the business, this is well installed.
Good. For what you guys provide, thank you.
Thank you.
Please report, Wayne's not here tonight, so I think everybody got in their mailbox his report. Park, I guess we covered Park with Amber.
Yeah.
And utilities, Bob, are you on? Bob Porter?
He was on there before. I can cover what he wanted to cover.
Right.
There's a picture there, I'll pass it around to you, this is of Sand Hill Boulevard and Cavalier Drive, very popular. You can see on there where the red is, that's the location that Bob wants to put a stop sign because that traffic going in and out of that parking lot, if you prefer to wait until MACOD does traffic count, we'll wait and have them assess that on stop sign, but we think if it's there, the traffic coming off Cavalier Drive from Sand Hill Farm would stop to see any traffic coming out of that parking lot, it's kind of a little bit of a blind, you know, spot there, but that's the ideal location, we think, to put that. Yeah, just put a sign up, we would have to have you approve.
And amend your ordinance.
Yeah.
A question. What, how many people are in each?
Yeah, Sand Hill is twenty-four units and the paddocks is forty-eight units. So the paddocks.
Before they get the right away.
Yeah, now the paddocks is a bit, it's not that parking lot.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm one of the ones that mentioned the counts, so I'm, I'm good with this. This.
You want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve putting the stop sign on Cavalier Drive at the intersection of Sand Hill Boulevard for outgoing traffic.
And amending the ordinance? And amending.
And amending the ordinance.
Sounds good, is there a second?
Second.
Which was made to approve the stop sign in Sand Hill and Paddocks and amend the ordinance, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
That's all we have that was outside of, you know, that I want to think of, actually I have a thing for that too, Josh Smith earned his water operator certification last week, he completed the place successfully, or the test successfully, which are essentially a cent per hour increase, and so if he could just make a motion to approve a twenty-five cent per hour, it's effective such a purchase.
Or.
For Josh.
Josh.
Josh Smith.
Josh Smith.
I believe that we approve a twenty-five cent per hour increase for Josh Smith, effective September twenty-seven.
Thank you, Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Ham, which was made in second to approve twenty-five, twenty-five cent per hour increase for Josh Smith, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. That's it for utilities, thank you ma'am. Next, boards and commissions, land commission.
Just been working on trying to get this coordinated, or looking at changes that we want to be doing in the future, trying to go through that page by page, and things that we have seen in the past that we want to implement. Pretty much where the playing commission is at right now. VZA has been very busy, we had five cases in the month of August, and we have five again, of course. So. Yet each one trying to analyze and understand what the request is and how to handle it, so VZA, I commend them for the work they're doing, we have had more cases this year as of September than we had all of last year for VZA. So, they're, they're working hard, they were being tougher, and I don't know. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, and I have to apologize upfront to Jim Clevenger tonight, getting at with him earlier in this month and getting things coordinated and put together, but I think between us and Jenny, we can answer the questions, Apple still in the court system. Correct, yeah, okay, Bozma on Jefferson Street, now that went to the unsafe board for the county, and they have decided that they're going to move forward on it and clean it up, take care of it, and to his tax bill.
That's correct.
The only thing, I've got a question there, is just picking up the jump from the fire, or are you going to take those first two buildings down because they're pretty bad shape?
I think it's only one building, isn't it Jim, that the one that's the fire?
Are there two buildings that that caught fire?
Yeah, they were kind of tied together, they were joining one.
Oh, yeah, I was, I didn't realize there were two.
I didn't either, I, I just.
He's got those two wooden structures that sit there, most. Are in bad shape. That we're not going to do now, but that'll be looking for it, because it's going to. The next thing is Obispo, have you heard anything back from them?
You know, they had a plan in place, that's been several weeks ago since that, there's been no activity, I presume, but I understood they are keeping in mode, you know, they're, they're hoping, I think, to do some other piece and then.
They were supposed to give us a schedule, which I. There.
But they put a roof on, right?
Uh-uh.
No, okay, maybe that's what they're going to do, they're going to put a roof on and then try to deal with the interior next spring.
And I don't know the best way, Jenny, to go about this, whether I write a letter, you write, do it in conjunction, or we have.
I, I can communicate with them.
We, we need a schedule.
I've told them that, I've told them that, I told them I'm going to take them back to court to get it if they don't get it to me, and then they promise it to me, and then they do this and that, and then.
Well, then they call them, and they think that satisfies everybody, so if you will do that, we would appreciate it. Leskey out of State Road Ten, I've been working with, working with, I've been in contact with the Marsh County plant director and also the building inspector, that, as I went back and looked at it today, hasn't had its completion certificate occupancy issue, building is not complete, it's inside of it, building it, working on it now, so I'm trying to get them to their side of the building side because that's where we probably have the most leverage.
Yeah, it's out of our jurisdiction.
What's that?
It's out of our jurisdiction.
Well, not for zoning.
It's in our, it's in our zoning jurisdiction, but.
Zoning, but not for the.
Yeah, because they do all the inspections.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
So, there is some contention there between the land director and myself as to who's supposed to be doing that, but they issue permits, their responsibility, my opinion. Anyway, if I hear different, I'll keep you all informed on that. I got an email about a water problem from Portside Marina to the old trailer park, went out there today, looked at it, they, official plan was mid-plan at Portside, they have water sloping back, they've got a, you know, coming into a swell, then they've got a structure there that the water's supposed to go with, when we had that two-inch torrential downpour, two inches per hour that we were getting, it didn't take it fast enough and it flowed over onto the old trailer. So I'm going to be, I talked with one of the managers out at Portside, and I'll be talking with the Morseins, who've investigated what we're going to do, I talked with Bob Porter, he said that that's a private basin there, that it's not ours, so I'm going to go back and look and see, I mean, he, he's been right on everything that I asked him, so I'm assuming that they put it in themselves to just pave it out.
Portside did, you said Portside did?
Yeah, so anyway, I'll keep you up to date on that, and as I was out driving around today, I came down Ohio Street, there's two properties there, they're pretty poor shape, I'm going to be sending letters out to try to get them cleaned up, screwed up a little bit, back into a habitable condition. They're at the corner of Ohio and.
Ted Hawkins?
Oh, yeah, we're, yes, that's, they're just. I'll be working on that, and have them report that, but yes.
Thank you. Redevelopment. He's not here, so. Anyone else talk on redevelopment?
They reviewed the TIF properties at the last meeting, they did the call presentation, we had to join CRC Council meeting, that's where the biggies on their list, really.
The only thing I think that we're, the Paul and Jenny and I are waiting for is to find out when the county auditor is, will have no communication.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do to help that out, the deputy charge of the TIFs is new, very new.
Yes.
And so she's still sort of in a learning mode, so. It's pleasant, and I think we'd be happy to work with, just kidding.
Just enough by I, Bill, Karen found a webinar that's coming up on residential TIFs that I'm going to, she signed me up for, so I'll keep the CRC in the loop on what we learned there. All of us, CRC, so.
Okay, anyone here from tree commission? Looks report.
I just had one claim for approval. It is from Open Air Cinemas, it is for the movie screen that I purchased, they had a donation from the gift. They had a donation from the gift of war that paid part of it. Eight thousand dollars came to CRC. And the park was responsible then for three thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Will we approve that claim?
For a second? Motion made by Rich, second by Bill Ham, that we approve the, uh, claims over two thousand dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Hey, I just want to remind everyone that cleanup day is October ninth from eight AM until three PM. And that is at the water park parking lot. Culver Town residents can bring items over there. Um, the guys will accept everything except hazardous waste and tires. And if you need something picked up, um, let's call time call and we'll get that arranged. And then there were a couple of other things on my report. One was an agreement with Baker Tilly to do a comprehensive financial plan and I will wait until next meeting to request approval of that. Um, but basically I just want to get something in writing so that we can start planning for some of these large purchases and start chipping away at it. And Baker Tilly can help us with that. Um, and finally, uh, the, let's see, right now Chuck works out of this room and kind of in this corner. It doesn't really have any storage space, stuff to kind of keep things on a permanent basis. And doesn't have a really a phone that we can run to him. Um, and so I kind of scattered out the building and found a little corner in EMS, uh, living room that would work perfectly for a little office. And I talked with Jeff and he is willing to give up that corner. So that we can, uh, fill an office space for Chuck. It's not going to be very big, but it will do the job. Um, Bob's crew will take that on as one of their winter projects for us. And so the only cost that the town will have material surprise. So I just want to let you know about that. We'll have a door. We'll add a door out to the hallway. Um, so, so Chuck doesn't have any access to EMS. Um, we'll keep that separately separate. Um, but we'll, once things slow down a little bit and we get into the winter season, um, hopefully we're not doing a whole lot of snow plowing. The guys will be over to get to work on that.
That's just an FYI?
It is an FYI. And if you have any questions on the Baker Tilly, um, thing, just let me know.
Okay. And that's it?
Yes.
Turners report.
Yes, um, this is kind of a little bit related to what Paul was talking about earlier. Um, and we've heard a lot about Phil Descended tonight, and this basically is a request to engage Phil and Barnes and Thornburg concerning the, uh, special economic development project that we have kind of got in the works down at the intersection of Tamarack Road and Westshore Drive. That's a property owned by Beachview, Beach, Beachview Properties LLC. And I think you're all a little bit familiar with the proposed project. When, uh, the, so you know, as a bit of background, the, uh, that particular property was added to TIF one in, uh, twenty fourteen, by the CRC. And it was done actually through a county resolution because the three parcels that were coming in at that time, Beachview Property, Kevin Berger's property, where the development was going to be, and some property owned by Kathleen Davis, were all outside of the town limits. So, and it's a permissible kind of thing that you can bring those in. So, uh, that was done at the time and of course it was contemplated that Kevin was going to be development in his area. I don't know whether they thought something that Beachview was going to be a little sooner than it has, but anyway, it, it, it was brought in, uh, by that county resolution. The, uh, there hasn't been much done, so the value is vacant and sits at somewhat low value. The developer now does want to develop that property into this, uh, what do you call it, Jenny?
Luxury boat and RV storage.
Yeah, luxury boat and RV storage. Uh, and so he's going to construct some units there. It's going to obviously improve the, the property. We annexed, um, the Howard property, Garden Court property. We ran utility south, but the town didn't go all the way to the Howard property. And when you bring, when you annex property in, the law says that you will provide utilities within three years. And well, it's long since been that we haven't got that done. Developer proposed, uh, that, uh, because he's someone that has done a lot of, uh, development of various kinds of residential projects involving utilities, that he, he would be responsible for putting in the utility lines to connect to the town's Southernmost Point. And was agreeable to also, you know, basically running the lines far enough south. Uh, but he, you know, he obviously still wanted the town to be responsible for that, those expenses. One of the things that we, his, his proposal was, is that he would use, you know, TIF funds that were going to be paid in to reimburse him for the town's expense of putting in the utilities. And that's, that's really how TIF projects work. So that was a good plan. The only problem is, uh, there's only a abbreviated time on that tip, as, as Paul had pointed out earlier. So the payback was going to be pretty tough. Uh, I think they contemplated it's almost going to take pretty much all of our TIF funds to get the expenses paid back. So that wasn't a very workable kind of project. So we talked to Jenny and Sally and I talked to, uh, Phil Descended earlier and so forth. And, and it turns out he's, he's assured us that we can, uh, separate that parcel out, restart a TIF area there, which would have a longer.
Life span.
Period, right? And maybe under that scenario, uh, would be a better economic feasibility for going forward. Now, um, I, I want to get to the engagement, but I will address two things. The developer had sent us a number, some paperwork for an economic, uh, yeah, agreement and some other things that did not follow the traditional statutes for setting up a TIF area resolution for these paybacks and so forth. And so I, and I think I sent you all an email with a memo on it and so forth. So I'll try to shorten it up. But the bottom line is, is that there was kind of process number one proposed by the developer. And then there's the more traditional process number two, which Phil's a little more comfortable with. Uh, he can help us on either event. If we haven't made that election, we're going to make some decisions. But like, it would be very helpful to the town to bring him on to assist and I, he's probably not going to help. I mean, it wouldn't be part of the annexation that's proposed. But he's going to be more involved in the economic development side of this thing. Re sort of identifying a TIF program, setting it up in that fashion that, uh, that is going to be a little bit more feasible for the project and for the town.
And they have been, did you?
Right. Now, the, the engagement letter that he sent to us, and I think I sent you all a copy of it as well. It, it's not long on specifics about, um, estimating fees at this point, but if you read through it, you can see what he's proposing is, is let's get started. Let me get collecting information and let me get a better picture of where we are. And somewhere down the road that I can give you a better, truer picture of what, what the things are going to be.
And I, in reading that agreement, it's very clear that they have a defined client that is the town and exclusive of town agencies and boards. So it basically, as I read that, is saying that if we engage to do this work, it does not include CRC. And we're sort of doing this as a.
Yeah, and I talked in a little bit about that because I think, um, you know, I, I, I told him that as far as I'm concerned, called the town council and CRC are going to be operating as kind of one for these purposes. Yeah. And, uh, he understood that and, and, you know, he, but he's expecting his check for his services from the town. But he understands that there's going to be a benefit to CRC and helping set all this up as well. And, and as you heard, Paul's intending to engage him on behalf of CRC to look at these other parcels that, you know, he's got some concerns about. So I, I don't have a problem with it. If you guys have a problem, I can look at somebody else, do somebody else. But I just think it's a savings that we got one guy that's.
I agree.
I was doing all this.
I mean, I would just suggest they modify that client definition to include.
To include.
The CRC, um, because the way it's written.
Well, and you know, CRC was the first one to engage Baker, or Barnes and Thornburg and Phil Descended. I mean, I, I inherited him, so, um, he considers himself really to some extent the CRC council. So I don't think he'd have a problem doing that.
I mean, I think it's advantageous to have him involved in it. He's the one who knows both the law and the history here. And so I'm not saying we shouldn't engage him. I just like to be sure that he's working for the town as a whole, which includes CRC and the council.
And, and I want you to also know that our engagement of him for this specific project of Beachview Properties LLC can easily be expanded to include if there are some other areas that you want to include in TIF. It was mentioned the night four fifteen Lakeshore, somebody else that's going to have a fairly valuable kind of, you know, increase in assessed value. You know, we may want to consider, uh, adding some of those. And, and I think that's what CRC is going to maybe do in the future. So anyway, I, uh, I guess I'm suggesting, recommending that we engage Phil to help us out on the Beachview Properties LLC project. And I would be happy to suggest that, uh, by about, uh, about the rest.
Would you like a motion to that effect?
I would. And actually, this engagement letter calls for just the president.
I would move that we, um, authorize Phil Williams on behalf of the town council and, um, on as a whole to engage Barnes, Barnes and Thornburg in the initiative to find in their proposal with the understanding that it's modified so that it includes CRC and the town council.
Motion made in second that I execute.
Slightly revised engagement.
Slightly revised, slightly revised engagement letter with Barnes and Thornburg to hire them to represent the town and CRC. As to this Beachview.
Properties.
Properties LLC. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And motion made by Rich, second by Bill Ham.
The CRC already said.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion's been made, yeah, seconded. Approve the engagement letter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Jenny. Motion carries. Want to have him redo the engagement letter before we sign it?
Either, either way, um.
Why don't we?
I'll, I'll, I'll have him.
Just redo, redo the engagement letter. That way it'll.
And then I'll.
Then I'll get it to me and we'll, we'll execute.
Thanks. I, I think it's an interesting project. I think it can be a benefit to the town if we work it outright. I mean, we can even get utilities run to an area where we were supposed to hunt them. Uh, hopefully have utilities set up for future expansion and add a little assessed value to the town and, uh.
Well, and I'd rather see it correctly rewritten before we.
Yeah, I mean, re, restarting or requalifying is a.
We don't need any.
It's a little different to the whole program, so.
That way there wouldn't be any questions as we move forward.
Oh, sir. Where is this going to be done?
It's across the street from the cemetery.
Office. Got it.
Intersection of, uh, Tamarack Road and.
Phil and Main Street.
Good point, Tim. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Runs into Main Street, actually.
Just to let you know, I've already had inquiries. So there's running down there, people wanting to look at.
Well, we, our intentions are certainly to build it big enough to.
And I talked to Bob about that to make sure.
Yeah. We may put you to work when it gets to that part, but, uh, making sure they got those in on specs.
The developer is letting us set up the specs for it so that we can do it for you.
Mr. President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone present for a utility shut off or ordinance violation? You're hearing none? Time for citizen input. Anybody in the room on citizen input? Please stand up, state your name and.
Jim Hahn, uh, live here on Lightview Street, Culver. Jenny, uh, you're, you're working on something with broadband. And you've had some work sessions. I'm assuming you're going to make some kind of a presentation to the board.
Yeah, we have a task force working on it, uh, basically researching, I get fiber, not broadband. Broadband's a more general term.
I understand.
We have had a lot of feedback from people that cable provider isn't necessarily sufficient for businesses and some of us in it's playing as well. So we're currently engaging with providers and collecting some data.
With the idea of making that available to individual residences.
Yeah, and businesses.
And businesses.
The long process though won't happen overnight.
Thank you.
All right.
Carrie Chesley in five twenties South. Uh, I got two things to question. One is, uh, with the phase two stellar town trail, they recently removed three saplings for south. It's not clear whether those trees were going to be reassigned somewhere. Not reassigned really quickly, they're going to die. Do them for nobody.
And that does not allow us to do that. Uh, they have different guidelines in some agencies, like the right of way and move them to another location. So our plan is, in, in one case, it's on, um, right of way and someone's private property where they put it in to the right of way. So that particular case, we can ask that homeowner if we can move it into their yard, but that would be on us to do that versus the contractor. And some of the trees that we originally thought we were going to have to remove on South Main Street, you have cemetery there. Uh, because we are shortening the width of the trail from ten feet to eight feet, turns out we won't have to remove several of those trees now. Originally, there were twenty-two total trees that potentially would come out. And now we're down to twelve. Um, and that's, we were down to eleven, but we added one that is causing this an issue on Washington Streets right here. So, uh, but they have particular rules about tree removal and.
That seems.
Yeah.
Shame.
So we'll, we'll probably do what we've done with some of the other trails and work the tree commission when they're doing their plantings. We'll, we'll focus on that parkway again to replant some of those.
Second issue I have is a reappearing one. And I've been coming to these meetings for, I think, about five years. And I just get baffled as to this process procedure, red tape, whatever you want to call it, for demolishing a decrepit structure that's clearly years in arrears of any improvement. There's no signs of habitation. There's just decay and, 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 uh, people that's not representative of, for example, what we want to do in the parks. These are fringe areas, I understand. It's not the main street like you call it, but they're still part of the town. They get seen, they get walked by. They get seen, they get walked by, especially with the trail coming in. Not necessarily through my complaint is not, actually it's on Akron, at the BISBO. But they're part of the community and they get ignored year after year, meeting after meeting. And right now, the 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 property at two oh five Akron and across the alleyway. They haven't been mowed for two months. You can hardly, well, actually, maybe it's, maybe it's the plant, pretty soon you're not going to be able to see that. And so it's, it's, it stinks. The wall retaining walls falling in on the sidewalk. Uh, the property is is clearly an eyesore, but yet it just sits there. And I don't know what kind of uh fruitless dance we do about some, and that's just one. I I'm just going to pick on that one because I walk by it every day. Don't understand it. It's, there there's got to be something going on that I don't understand or don't don't get. That that place is literally falling in on itself. And it is just, I don't know if you guys drive by, but take a look. And if nothing else, I need to muddle on, he was doing it or she was doing it every month, but that's.
We have to send the grass, we said, so that every time, that's why.
Is the process for this that's that we're missing? You've connected dots so far and then it just drops off.
This is uninhabited?
Oh, God, yes. It's it's in such a decrepit.
And what was the address?
Two oh five Akron. At the corner of Abyssone, Batavon.
It's the same.
And I I I mean, it it clearly meets all the conditions for a building, a structure that needs to come down. So I just don't know why we don't. Hit it, put the house right across the alley, a small white house, it doesn't get mowed. I don't understand why they can't do it without.
Is that the property, is that property the one that's got multiple owners on the deed and getting service? Yeah, that's that's part of the problem, you know. Get the service. Well, but in order to get to court. Right?
You gotta serve the landowner.
That's it.
Do we have a history of 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 any kind of documentation on what's been done?
Chuck, you want to handle that?
I can give you whose name is on the deed. That's Sammy, Sammy Lee and Lila Howard. Robert K. Cooper is the executor. So just to let you know which one it is that we put the topic about.
Okay.
Haven't been involved with it for five years. Take a look at it and try to see what we can do.
You must appreciate it, I mean, I I I come in good faith to these meetings because I want to receive.
I know you do.
To know about the town. But and I stay silent most of the time, but this is an issue that I clearly have missed something for, something not being done for some reason. And I'm just here to to please try to push this process along, especially with this president, it's just bad uh example of what Harvard is and could be.
We can keep you up to date in the progress that's starting from tonight, and you'll see what we go through on these properties. And what we've gone through in the past, uh i.e. College Avenue.
And and but I I think this, this one transcends that. And there's another, this is a sister property as far as decrepancy. Stones throw away that's wedged between two homes that nobody sees, its roof is caved in. Its windows are broken out, but it's not in a mainstream viewing position. I haven't even mentioned that, I'm just trying to to screws on this one so that I can see something. But I know there are other properties, Ohio Street, that's funded, and there's other on BISBO, but this has got to be the worst one in the town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Anyone else in the room for citizen input? Yes, sir, Kevin.
Judy, did you say that Jefferson Street is done? That's, that's all this, okay.
They haven't reached substantial completion yet. It's still here, it's substantial.
Just so it's on your radar. The the improvements on Jefferson Street are straight back curve and sandal bollard is a roll back curve. So what they've done is they've just sawed off the roll back curve and dyed the straight back curve into it. So there's a triangle of concrete there that's needs to be done with it, and because it's a very tight radius, they made sandal bollard pretty narrow for there. So if you're coming around that corner, uh it's going to be a spill top problem, and if somebody hits it with a tire, it's going to be a damage burn problem. So I didn't know if it's been seen, but I haven't seen, I saw the concrete work is done and I haven't seen anything else.
Yeah, I'll ask.
I'm curious about it, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yes.
My cherry waitfield three oh three West Madison Street. About six years ago, I sat in a meeting and had a lady complain about garbage trucks coming into town before six AM in the morning. Four forty, four forty-five, five o'clock in the morning. And they're not quiet. It's major noise, I can't believe other people have it when it gets up. Depending on where you live, of course, when they come to dump a dumpster, it's obnoxious, it's needed to be addressed, that's two, no reason to create, they need to be in town at four forty.
Really on my end of town, which is like six.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Derek, anyone else? Is there anyone online for citizen input? Okay, moving on, council issues. Rich? Bill?
Well, I just want to reiterate again that I think that uh Paul made an excellent presentation, but I I would hope going forward that he had his personal comments. Uh, I don't think it's uh totally accurate as far as uh what's happened with previous CRC members. And I think it's it's somewhat detracts from that um from his presentation. Uh, the second thing, um just to elaborate what Chuck said and 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 Jim was at, or actually, uh, Jim was at the meeting. There were two parts to Mr. Bozmas' situation. One of which was that he was required to put up a fence. And uh if he didn't put up the fence, the county was going to put the fence up. Well, um actually, as of Sunday, he's, he's actually um put the fence up. He's waiting for some more posts, but that was one of the requirements that it be a fence up. And the second, uh, the the second thing was, is that uh he readily admitted he doesn't have the the funds to um demo, he has a demo permit, but he doesn't have the funds to demo. And uh so he deferred to the county, so the county will be doing the demolition. And adding that to his various other indebtedness. So I think we probably are going to see the end of uh at least the eyesore out there, so that's all I have.
No, I'm good, thank you.
I have nothing. Neil, do you have anything else? Jenny?
No, I just, I I agree with Phil, the two of us worked on that TIFF property review. And um we know that we need to uh document that process and help onboard new CRC members. I think um we've always had long attention, volunteers serve. I also want to make sure that when we're going through this process, it's collaborative with the council and the plan commission because all three of these are intersecting in different ways. And I'm, I was serious about the fact that I know the plan commission is looking at rezoning some C two properties potentially. We obviously would not want to necessarily put those in the TIFF, so that communication among the three groups is really important and part of the process, and we need to keep that in mind. I realize, you know, stopping the lead, whatever Paul's mission is, but it's also not always the council's mission, the plan commission's mission to. But that may be the CRC member um in this case wanting to do that, but it doesn't necessarily mean. Um, because, you know, though we may not have collected TIFF dollars off those properties, taxes are collected, they do benefit the town. They do benefit the school, the library, et cetera, so it's not all um bleak and you know, misery that we did collect TIFF dollars on some of those properties, that that is a point I'm going to make too.
All points are well taken. During the motion, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.